Okay, we'll call the November 5th Planning Commission meeting to order and staff with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are ready to call the roll.
Mr. Townsend.
Here.
Mr. Poole. Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Here.
Ms. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Brad.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Ms. Boyd.
Here.
No referrals on the way, I'm gonna call Ms. Woodard. We do have a form.
All right, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the October 1st meeting?
So moved.
I heard two so moved, so I think that has a...
Good idea, Ms. Boyd and Tom.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
In your post, will they withstand approved? Under new business, first item 4.1 is a Williams property annexation of Wallace Road and 431 North. Is there a motion to put that on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. What have we got here today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a request to annex... The ordinance real quick. Off of Tax Map 69, parcel 97. According to the tax maps, it's approximately 17.5 acres. It is this parcel right here. Within the annexation, we're gonna annex this portion of Wallace Road, and we're gonna annex this portion of West Johnson Road. We're not gonna annex this portion, this is just the boundary of the parcel, but we're gonna be getting that portion of West Johnson Road and this portion of Wallace Road as well. And so, the area for the right-of-way for Wallace Road is approximately 4.48 acres, and the right-of-way for West Johnson Road is .53 acres, for a total of 18.51 acres per the Robertson County tax maps, Tax Map 69. So, within the ordinance, or the resolution, I apologize, there is a plan of service. The police will begin patrolling immediately, the fire department will provide fire protection and emergency services to this newly incorporated area with present personnel and equipment. They noted that this area is outside the 1.5-mile engine company response and outside the 2.5-mile aerial lateral response, and this could affect the ISO ratings for the development, meaning that their property, their homeowner's insurance may be a little Water, any required water, they would have to, the developer would have to provide upgrades to be able to provide the water that would be needed for the annexation and the development. Same thing with the sanitary sewer, they would have to provide that. They also have to get with the wastewater department and apply for capacity assurance to ensure that the capacity is there. Gas said that if five homes in the subdivision sign up, they will provide gas. Trash collection will begin when it's annexed, it's Black Park property right now, but when it's developed. Planning and building codes will provide services immediately upon annexation. Streetlights, they would be required for the development, and they would be our normal underground decorative streetlights within the development, and maybe even those along Wallace Road and Johnson Road if needed. And then stormwater, it all have to be within our stormwater ordinances approved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Clay Jones, who is the authorized agent developer for this proposed annexation, has reviewed the plan of services, and he has signed that plan of services. And after, if y'all recommend the annexation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, I will sign the plan of services for you, and we will have that within the resolution that will go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman on the 16th, 17th, 16th, 17th November.
Okay, on the water line, are they gonna have to bring that up to an eight-inch line?
Yes, sir. They will have to, if there's an existing two-inch, they would have to bring that up down Wallace Road and probably down to their entrance on, this entrance right here on Johnson, West Johnson, to provide a loop all the way through there, to provide fire protection. That's, you know, but they would come off, there's water right here on 41 that they would come off of. Electricity is in that area as well, and gas is on one side or the other. So, you know, all of the utilities are capable of providing that service if requested.
When we looked at this before, when they were concerned about the way the water was gonna drain, I think some people over here had concerns about that.
Yes, sir. Same road across the street. It was, the annexation request was, sorry, the annexation request was for a property up here, and Mr. Jones and the property owners backed away from that at that time. This is a whole different property. It's bigger, and, you know, it looks like they've got like 66 preliminary in there. Of course, it would all depend on wetlands delineation and what they can actually fit in there and things, but, you know, it's preliminary that's proposed. It's just a general layout that they're showing. After they were, if, when they do this, of course, this right-of-way would back up a little bit into the property, as well as this right-of-way along Johnson Road would back up into the property because they'd have to dedicate 10 feet of right-of-way to give 25 feet from the center line of the road. They will have to upgrade the roads, they would have to upgrade Wallace Road to here, and then they'd have to upgrade West Johnson Road to there.
Okay, are there any other questions?
There's 56 lots in that piece of property?
Um, it looks like it's, let's see...
Just, I mean, just air bounce.
It says 80, purpose, 83, single-family. It's a preliminary layout though, but yes, it's gonna be zoned RS10 from the county's agricultural, so it'd be 10,000 square foot lots, single-family residential only.
It's 63.
63, okay.
63.
63. And that's, like I said, I thought, that's the preliminary.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that they'll be able to get that many. It all depends on, you know...
We've had, in this chamber here, this board, we had South Main that was voted down.
Mm-hmm.
They took it to the Mayor Board and Alderman, they passed it.
That's the rezoning. That was a rezoning, only.
R10.
Yes, RS10.
And they got Jim Moore's property at the old Wallace Barbecue.
Yes, sir.
I don't even want R7. I'm sure it went before Mayor Board and Alderman, I'm sure it got passed.
It did.
Are we gonna become the postage-stamped community of the world?
No, sir. Well, actually...
I have not seen anything come before this board in a year.
Yes, sir.
That's got R15, R20 in it.
Yes, sir.
Where you can spread these houses out a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Now, I know what they're gonna do. They want to condense it as tight as they can get it, as much as they can, get the big bag for the buck. We cannot, we cannot afford to do that.
Yes, sir.
We can't do it.
Well, and the other side of that coin is developers can't afford not to do that. With the cost of water and sewer at the rates that they are now for installation of eight-inch water line and gravity sewers, the biggest you're ever gonna see in the near future, probably from here on, is gonna be an R15 development. The days of R20, the days of R40, we will never see those again, because you're looking at 75-foot frontages, or 100-foot frontages, and if you're getting two water, you know, two water taps and two sewer taps per every 200 feet, that...
We don't have a water problem at all.
We're not talking about water, and we're not talking about capacity. We're talking about the infrastructure. We don't put the infrastructure in, the developer puts the infrastructure in. Infrastructure goes in for about $45 linear foot for an eight-inch water line. It goes in for about $100 a linear foot in sanitary sewer.
We packed ourselves in a corner to where everything we're gonna do now is gonna be R10.
Not, not based on us, based on what the cost to do the work is.
On somebody else, David, I understand.
Well, no, it's the truth, Mr. Hollinsworth. I don't control the construction markets. I don't control the cost of construction. The cost of construction now...
It's out, construction's gonna be a little bit too high anyway. We can't, Springfield can't become the R10 capital of the world, can't do it. There's gotta be some R15 somewhere, there's gotta be some R20 somewhere. We can't back up from this and just give it to everybody.
I understand what you're saying.
I'll tell Jeff this, 'cause I mean, being Jeff's a friend, but I don't know what they need us for.
Mm-hmm.
If everything we turn down goes to Mayor Board and Alderman, and they pass it up, and say, "No, we're gonna do it anyway," what they need us for? That's what I'm trying to tell you. That's 50, oh, 60-something lots in a 17-square, I mean, a 17-mile acre, 17 acres.
17 acres, yes, sir.
There's too many houses in there, there's too many.
But, like I said before, Mr. Hollinsworth, that's what you're gonna see, because the price of infrastructure construction dictates what can be built. So, if, if, if we don't approve R10 construction, RS10, which will at least ensure single-family residential, we probably won't see any development. We won't see any more developments. We're, later on in this subdivision, you're gonna see a subdivision, Green Hills. It was planned as a PUD in 99. It's got 7,000, actually 6,000 square foot lots, so that they could get the maximum density that they could get in 99. This is the last phase of that. But, you know, I don't know what to tell you, Mr. Hollinsworth, I cannot, in the city of Springfield, and the developers cannot control the cost of infrastructure work. We've seen it through the AOC, how much it costs to do sanitary sewers that are gravity, how much in, you know, in new water line construction that we're doing. It's very expensive. It's almost $3 per inch, per linear foot, and by the time you get fixtures and valves in there, it's about $45 a linear foot. And that's not including fire hydrant assemblies that go in at approximately $7,000 apiece.
And does it include the land cost either?
Mm-hmm. So, you know, all I can tell you is the economic facts of development within the middle Tennessee region at the present time. Someday, prices may get where that they can do R15, R20, well, R20 and R40, but at the present time, you know, you just saw last month, an MRO, request to rezon, an R10 to MRO. Now, they're not doing full development on that because the topography won't let them, but they're still shooting for 60. We're gonna have an annexation request in the next month for five acres on Laurel Road, 55, they're gonna ask for MRO, 55 multi-residential condominium style, townhome style, similar to what Mr. Blackman, who is up next item for his bond on the Greens at Legacy, out off of Oakland Road.
Now, what we've got here, the request here is just for annexation or for rezon?
It's both.
Both.
It is gonna, you're gonna annex it, we annex it, and we rezon it in the same resolution, and that's the requirement of state law. We no longer annex properties by ordinances, we annex properties by resolution. Read three times as an ordinance, in the event, well, we only annex by request, but there are other cities that annex by either referendum or straight-up by resolution, without asking anybody if they wanna be annexed or not. If you do it by resolution, it stands a better chance of being overturned in a court of law if you don't agree to be annexed. So, but, that's where we're at in this day and age, Mr. Hollinsworth, and I, you know, I understand where you're coming from. I would like to see bigger lots, bigger homes myself.
Have we got any other questions? I'm not hearing any. Is there a motion for approval on this? I'm not hearing a motion. If we have no motion, I guess it would fail for lack of emotion.
That is correct.
Okay. We will move on then. 4.2, the Greens at Legacy Performance Bond. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Motion.
I heard, I probably heard a motion, did I hear a second? Okay.
Well, I got a motion, Mr. Townsend, I don't know who got the second.
I don't have a second.
A second on item 4.2?
Second.
We do have a second. We're ready to go.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're, Mr. Blackman with Blackman Homes, we were here in September, October last year, got the preliminary plat approved, the final plat actually has been approved as well. They have completed $500, $600,000 or more worth of infrastructure work out there. They've installed the curbs, the base stone, the binder cores, the water, the sewer, the storms, sanitary sewer, and the only thing that's remaining is the streetlights, the sidewalks, and the final cores, which has got a value of $138,200. I don't know if you've been out there, if you get the opportunity to drive by there, Mr. Blackman has done an excellent job of doing the infrastructure work, stabilizing the area. You know, it looks really nice, and as soon as we get this recorded in their HOA, recorded in their charter, they'll be, and we get their construction plans for their townhomes approved through Mr. Fields's department, we will be ready to start issuing building permits. And there'll be a maximum of 52. Mr. Blackman, what is the price ranges on these?
The one stories will be 325, with the bonus room a little more than that, 325 and up.
Okay, so, minimum 325.
All right, any questions? Discussion?
So, y'all will recommend this, approval of this bond forward to the Board of Mayor and Alderman? That's what you have done?
I make that recommendation to approve it forward.
Okay, we have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. We are ready to vote.
Ms. Woodard.
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Yes.
Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Brad.
Yes.
Ms. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Pass at 7-0.
All right, item 4.3 is Green Hill Subdivision, Section 1, Phase 4. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion? So moved. Is that a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Wanda. We're ready to go, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was looking at my slide. We are, this has been submitted by Mr. Reyes, he has, Harmon Jones Jr., no, Harmon Jones III, I apologize. Harmon Jones III, rusty, that's how I know him, and Mike knows him, but he started this development, this back in 99, and this is the last phase of that development, and the road ends right here, and it, and so it'll come here, and it'll come up into this area, the lots. And even though it's an R20 PUD, the lots, I think they're like in the 7,000 square foot range, that, this was, the density on this one was calculated back when we did not have underground electric as a requirement, and so now, you will never see one this dense But that's, you know, going back, that's what you're gonna see. If it's R20, somebody's gonna come in and wanna do a PUD and get a 15% property, or 15% increase in lots, and then you would lay out your roads and lay out your lots and get them, and so when you do a PUD, you approve a number of lots, and they make them fit, and they put in other amenities like parks and walking trails and things of that I'm not fond of PUDs, I don't know that we'll ever recommend a PUD to you. I mean, we may bring them to you, but I'm just not fond of them. But this one is, you know, construction plans were approved by all departments, plat has been approved by all departments, community development recommends approval of this subdivision plat, and Reyes Construction will begin work, they'll get a land disturbance permit, and begin work on the infrastructure. So they'll do, similar to Mr. Blackman, they'll put in, you know, water, wastewater, sanitary, storm sewer, base stone, curbs, maybe binder, and then they'll bond for the remainder. Because this is, you know, probably a million dollars' worth of infrastructure right there. And this is in accordance with the preliminary or the approved PUD master plan.
And you did say that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Did Mr. Blackman start this, this subdivision? No.
No, no.
Mr. Jones, Harmon Jones III started this one. Okay. And, and he, you know, he, Mr. Jones is, and other developers, other builders have built out this. Mr. Jones is going to sell the remainder of these to Reyes Construction. Mr. Reyes will be doing the infrastructure and building the homes on those lots, who Mr. Reyes has invested heavily in the city of Springfield residential construction. I agree.
And you did say that the staff was recommending that?
Yes, ma'am. It is in accordance with our subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance.
And the existing part of that, that's on that picture there, that's already built, that's the R20 PUD also?
Yes, sir. All of this, yes, sir. That comes in, road does like this, and then goes back out right there. There's stormwater management in here, and in here, and then there's gonna, there's gonna be, and there's some stormwater management in here, and they're gonna increase it for this new development. All in accordance with our stormwater ordinance, and has been approved by our coroner in Public Works.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve, is there a second? We have a second from Wanda. We are ready to vote.
Ms. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Yes.
Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Brad.
Yes.
Ms. Woodard. Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Pass at 7-0.
Okay, under other business, we've got the BZA agenda. Is that your territory there, Gina?
Yes. Reyes Construction is requesting a 15-foot setback variance at 1716 John L. Patterson on the 18th Avenue West side to allow for residents to be built. It is a corner lot on that, on John L. Patterson and 18th. James Moore is requesting a variance from the additional five-foot requirement for each additional story at 1811 Woodland Street. James Seymour is requesting two variances, the first one from the additional five-foot requirement for each additional story, and the second one is 17-foot variance from the 25-foot variance setback fronting 19th Avenue East at 1809 Woodland Street. And, just so you all know, Chief Gladaski, I was...
Gladaski.
Gladaski came to the BZA meeting last month, he gave us a short training, just because we were having these closer-together built homes, and staff were probably with the BZA. The BZA can put conditions on things unlike the Board of Mayor, I mean, unlike the planning commission. So, the fire department and the chief, Assistant Chief, is here tonight just to be here and if there's any questions. They're gonna start ringing in on stuff. We're gonna probably ask to have the two R firewalls, if they're so close together, depending on the feet and everything like that, but it's just to the point where we don't want any fires to take out the next door structure or anything like that if possible. So, we are beginning to try and get things like that put in the works so that we protect the homeowner and the residents inside. Do you have anything to add, Assistant Chief?
You kind of nailed it on that. I know that Chief Gladaski's been working really hard on a lot of this, kind of getting things prepared for the BZA meeting that's coming up, just so, like you said, we kind of wanna weigh in on this, and as, you know, these properties do get closer and closer together, obviously, our priority is the safety of our residents and the safety of our firefighters themselves. So, you know, specifically the firewalls, things like that, if we're having a single home, a single dwelling on fire, we don't want it to quickly turn into three homes on fire. So, he'll be weighing in on that in more detail at the BGA meeting.
And is it, there are certain feet that the firetruck has, the big firetruck, it has a ladder on it, there's a certain circumference or something that it has to spread out and be able to, for the ladder to go up?
Well, that's another consideration too, of our aerial device and as well as ground ladders. We're ladder building from the sides, you know, obviously for a proper climbing angle, we've gotta be able to get that thing out a little bit, so that's definitely another consideration where kind of where we're coming from.
That's all I have.
Okay, is there any other business we need to...
Well, of course, before you adjourn, we want to take the opportunity once again to thank each and every one of you for your service to the city of Springfield. We couldn't move forward without your help and without your input on these decisions and recommendations to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. We always appreciate your service, and we hope that you continue to serve for the Plan Commission. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
One more, Matt?
This is my last meeting. This is my last meeting. I roll off in November anyway. And after what happened Tuesday, I'm sure I'm gonna roll off pretty quick, but of course, Clay appointed me and of course, the new girl coming in, I know she's gonna appoint somebody, you know, that she can trust and bring up here, which is fine. I have no problem. I just wanna say thank y'all, all y'all, working with y'all for the last four years has been great. It's been great. I mean, learned a lot of stuff.
Been good having you all aboard.
Just enjoyed it. David, Gina, y'all do a great job. Just really appreciate it. But like I said, I just, this is my last one and, but I come in every now and then and say hello.
Well, we look forward to it. Mr. Hollinsworth, it's always been a pleasure to work with you and your dedication to the city of Springfield has been greatly appreciated and anything you need, you let us know.
Ah, sure will.
All right, is there anything else?
This meeting was gonna begin until you dropped that on it.
I would like to make this comment that we did make, we did have some concerns about the fire trucks going in at different areas and the ladders, all those things. I think we had addressed that before and we're glad to see that you all have a great concern with it as well.
Well, as always, you know, the city of Springfield strives to provide safe new construction and that includes services. We will make sure that all of our services, our utility services make it safely and to the people. We also wanna make sure that the police and the fire department, our first responders are safe while they do their job. You know, I have, like I was telling Chief Bowlin this morning, I have the utmost respect for the fire department because when you and me and the rest of us are running out of the building, those guys and those young ladies are moving, running in. And we can't thank them enough for the sacrifices that they make and the dedication that they have to the city of Springfield themselves. Thank you, Chief, and all firefighters. Let them know we appreciate it as well.
Special person for that job, I'm with him, a clive boy. Let you know why I stand with him.
And it is good to see a little cleanup going on on the old Carter Lumber Company property there.
Yes, we sent a letter to that gentleman and I can't remember his name right now. Birch, yes, thank you. And, and he responded. He responded because he knew that we were gonna move forward and we can't do it as chief as he can do it. So, but yes, it's good to see, you know, people in that neighborhood have called and commented and thanked us for doing, making sure that got taken care of as well. And, you know, we, we're on our way to making Springfield better than it is. It's already a great place to live and work. It's gonna be even better in the not-too-distant future.
On that cleanup project, I noticed that they were working, but now I haven't seen anything going on in two or four days.
Well, they might need to, I don't know, I'd have to follow up with Mr. Fields. They may have dumpsters that are full that have to be changed out or something, but we will continue to put the pressure on Mr. Birch to move forward because if he stops for too long, we'll move forward.
The guy running the Dozier's dad died.
Oh, really?
Harry Berry.
Yeah.
Mark Berry was the one running the Dozier, so.
Okay. We'll give him a little leeway there. My condolences to Mr. Berry.
All right, have we got anything else? Or we will stand and jury then?